Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
The time is 9:30. My name is Mike Kelly. I'm the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, and I am pleased to call to order the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Johnson County, Kansas. It's Thursday, April 20th, 2023. Welcome. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
I am here as well. All are present, if you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody being here today. If you'd all please do me a favor and join me in checking to make sure your cell phone or other noise-making device is on silent. We'd really appreciate it. We have one proclamation this week. It is for Victims Rights Week. It is my great privilege to welcome our District Attorney, Steve Howe, as well as the Victim Assistance Unit Supervisor, Mr. Brian Porch. Mr. Howe?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the Board of County Commission. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your support of my office, which is instrumental for us being able to provide necessary services to victims of sexual assaults, domestic violence, and other violent crimes, as well as identity theft and fraud. We serve over 6,000 victims a year in our county. We send out notifications of court hearings over 30,000 times to keep our victims apprised of hearings. And we also do 17,000 referrals to other services, to agencies like Safe Home, Moxa, Sunflower House, and other agencies. And so, we're very busy, and my supervisor of the Victim Assistance Unit, Brian Porch, has been with the county for over 30 years, and so, a dedicated person to this county and to the victims throughout the years. And Brian has 10 staff that work in our Victim Assistance Unit, and two people from Safe Home. And we were just commenting that in national conferences, that is so unique to have members of Safe Home embedded into our office providing assistance. And we take that for granted because we've been doing it for over 20 years, but it is something that's very unique and something we're very proud of, serving the victims of violence. You know, it is unfortunate that we have a job where we have to assist victims of violence, but we're proud of the work that we do to, you know, from the small children that are victimized through abuse to our senior citizens, dependent adults. We span the whole spectrum of ages and disabilities of individuals that need our assistance. And I'm most proud of the work that we do for those who can't speak for themselves. And I think truly that's the job that the District Attorney's Office should be the number-one priority that we have. And so, we take a lot of pride in the work that we do, but we couldn't do it without your support and your assistance. And we are so lucky to have a county commission that's willing to give us the necessary resources to provide those services to the victims of violence, and also fraud and identity theft. And so, on behalf of all the victims, and on behalf of my office, I want to thank you for the services you provide. I want to thank you for the recognition of, the recognition that despite us being a very safe county, despite us being a very wealthy county, we still do have victims of crime in this county that need our assistance. And you play an integral part in us providing those necessary resources, and I want to thank you for that continued support. And we will continue to do our very best for the victims in Johnson County, and provide those services, and provide justice to them. So, thank you again for all, everything that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Howe.
I see I have a proclamation here, and we will make sure that we display that in our office.
We'll take a quick photograph, but I want to make sure that we recognize Mr. Porch as well, and I appreciate you bringing him here today. Among other things, I note that he is the CSDV State Ally of the Year Award recipient. Congratulations. You're welcome to share some thoughts, but if not, no pressure here.
Well, when you have a boss, a district attorney, who puts the rights of crime victims at a real high priority, three-fourths of the job is done right there. But I would just be repeating what he said, that, you know, we have outstanding resources here in Johnson County, community partners, wonderful staff in our Victim Assistance Unit, and, you know, that's all the tools necessary. And then, the job from then on is just to make sure that we're not ever passing the buck, and we make that commitment every day to ask, what else can we do to provide assistance?
Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. I think we're going to grab a photo.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We're now going to turn to the public comment portion of our agenda, for speakers to speak on business that does not later appear on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item later on the agenda, we ask that you register in advance to speak on that item. If you happen to speak on an item that's on our agenda, we'll ask that you refrain during this general public comment section. When you come to the dais, we ask that you state your name and address. Comments are limited to two minutes. There's a clock that will assist you. If you go beyond the two-minute time limit, I am required to ask you to conclude your comments. We ask that members of the public refrain from remarks that are offensive or impertinent or profane or slanderous, or that target any individual or demeans any person. If you happen to stray into that kind of testimony, I'll give you a warning. If it continues, I'll ask that you step away from the dais. I'll ask the clerk to go ahead
Recording in progress.
Chair, I think we are ready.
Very good. A few notes from the record this morning. First, I will be signing administrative resolution number WD 23-009, enlarging the privately financed sewer district and provides for the assessments of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated main sewer district in the vicinity of 18283 Melrose Drive. Further, I will be signing two full and one partial release of easements for Johnson County wastewater due to the removal of sanitary sewer line in the vicinity of 2101 West 69th Street in the city of Mission Hills, Kansas. With that, let's move on to the business session, starting with our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, Commissioner Allen Brand?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Hanslick, second.
Motion made by Commissioner Allen Brand, second by Commissioner Hanslick. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. Onto the action agenda. First up, resolution number 030-23. This is a request from Olson Engineering and Van Trust Real Estate for the preliminary and final signed development plan for monument signs at the New Century Commerce Center. I'd like to welcome Diane Wicklund from Planning to discuss this item that is in Commissioner Allen Brand's district. Ms. Wicklund.
Good morning, Diane Wicklund, Planning Department. As discussed last week, this request is for multiple monument signs for the New Century Commerce Center, located at 159th Street and Clear Road, as you can see here on the vicinity map. Here's a copy of what the signs will look like. That's the tenant sign, and then that's the secondary monument sign. Just a reminder that there were no members of the public that spoke at the zoning board meeting for this application. Planning staff recommends approval, and the zoning board also recommends approval of the sign plans with stipulations. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wicklund. It's exciting times, a new century. Appreciate this item is plus-plus. Are there any questions? Commissioner Allen Brand.
Mr. Chair, when you're ready. I do have a motion. This meets all the criteria. The staff has done a tremendous job on this, and it's exciting what's going on at our airports, and it's exciting to see these signs.
Thank you. Not seen any further questions, so please go ahead with your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt resolution number 030-
Excuse me. Is your mic on? Thank you.
Okay, with that motion, I move to adopt resolution number 030-23, which approves a preliminary and final signed development plan for multiple monument signs at the New Century Commerce Center complex for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth within the resolution.
Hanslick, second.
So moved by Commissioner Allen Brand, second by Commissioner Hanslick. Seeing no other questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
All right. The motion carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Wicklund. Next, we are considering an application from KKSW Properties LLC for the preliminary and final plat approval for residential lots to be known as 175th and Edgerton Second Plat, located at 17770 Edgerton Road. Karen Miller from Planning is here to discuss this item that also is in Commissioner Allen Brand's district.
Thank you, Karen Miller with the Planning Department. This application is located at approximately 175th and Edgerton, as you can see on the vicinity map. It's a replat of an existing planted lot. It'll create sixteen acre lots and one eighty-six acre lots. The proposed replat continues to meet all of the zoning and subdivision regulations, including the minimum infrastructure requirements. Both zoning board and planning staff recommend approval. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miller. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Mr. Chair, this meets all the criteria. The staff, again, has done an excellent job, and they're no one contested it. So when you're ready, I do have a motion.
If you know further questions, please proceed with your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the preliminary and final plat to be known as 175th and Edgerton Second Plat as the reasons and subject to stipulations recommended by the zoning board.
Hanslick, second.
So moved by Commissioner Allen Brand, second by Commissioner Hanslick. Ask the clerk to go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara. Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have some votes in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That is correct.
Application's approved. Thank you very much, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to consider an exception to competition in authorizing the purchase of twelve Ford E450 cutaway replacement vehicles for Masters Transportation Incorporated. We have Josh Powers from Public Works here to discuss this matter with us. Mr. Powers, thanks for your discussion of this item on agenda review and the potential funding sources, especially the congestion mitigation air quality funds. Any further report you'd like to provide to us before we consider this item?
No, Chairman, thank you. Just to mention that this is an opportunity for the county to save some money and have some vehicles that are immediately available put into our paratransit system. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Powers, beyond this particular acquisition, will we be having any further discussions about the distribution and intensity of ridership and the cost benefit of the various service options that we are providing to the community? Since COVID, as I understand it, ridership has been variable in some areas and with cost escalations. I was just wondering if we will be getting an update to look at and consider options.
Thank you, Commissioner. Josh Powers with Transit. Yes, as we've discussed in previous meetings, we are planning for a committee of the whole meeting approximately halfway through the year to kind of report out on the pilot programs that we've implemented, and some of that ridership data, cost data would be included in that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Powers, thank you so much for sending me the information that I had requested last week. I really appreciate that. I just wanted a little bit of clarification. There's on the paratransit, there's three, there's three, there's, I guess there's total ridership on the paratransit, and then there's two types. There's Freedom and Swift. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, and so it shows on the total that from the peak in 2019 of 116,445 trips, that it is in 2022 is down to 95,062, which is an 18.3% decrease. Is that correct?
I'm not looking at it, but yes, I think that's correct.
Okay, and then on the Freedom, it seems like that the Freedom has rebounded much better, 84,654, and now it's down to 71,194. And then, then the Swift, the in 20, it's interesting. In 2015, the ridership was 41,000, and then it was going down each year, 40,000, 36,000, 33,000, 31,000, and now it's at 23,868. Is your, is your office looking at what the issues are that this, this does not appear to be a successful program?
Commissioner Josh Powers with Transit, I think the important factor to understand about the Swift program is that is internal to Johnson County. Those are for clients of Johnson County developmental supports. So the number of rides are predicated by what JCDS is requesting from us. I think the way that we look at it is that as we assist people to their group home shelter work site, we are allowing them to continue to participate in the community. So, you know, we would like to see that number continue to go down because it means that people are being able to more fully participate in the community.
Have our costs gone down in an equal, I mean, that's almost a 50% decline from 2015. Have, have we, have we downsized to respond to this change in need?
When you say downsized, what we're doing there is we're responding to the requested rides from JCDS. So if we're not providing a ride, then there's not a cost associated with that ride. That's not me.
Except we have equipment.
Yes, but these vehicles are used throughout the other services as well. There's not a dedicated fleet for Swift.
Okay, and then one other question on the cost per ride, and this is for 2022, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is for one way, correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, so, so for Freedom, the cost per ride is $33.67, and then the Swift is 32.15, so it'd be double that. $67 basically per ride there and back on the Freedom, and on Swift, it would be 64.30 per ride on the Swift.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand, you had some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Powers, I really appreciate you and how much time you spend out in the community, and I know that the one program is helping our most vulnerable people. And throughout my district, there's a lot of vulnerable people using that transportation. And some of it was a pilot program and putting things into place, which I, in the sixth district, there was no transportation at one time, and you realigned that. And I really appreciate the, it's a committee or board of transit working on that. And also, you're going out into the workforce. I know you've met with me with several different businesses out in the sixth district on different opportunities of enterprise, looking at different models. And I think those will become most successful down the road, and I look forward to everyone hearing more about that and the success of that story.
Well, and thank you very much, Mr. Powers. And I appreciate everybody wants to talk about transit generally, and I appreciate that Mr. Powers is going to make himself available because infrastructure and the transit that is provided by that infrastructure is a priority that we have identified and will continue to discuss as the year goes on. Let's bring it back to this item specifically as it relates to the chassis. And-
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Myers.
Yes, I believe all seems to be in order on this item, so I have a- Yes, I believe all seems to be in order on this item, so I have a motion when you're ready.
Go ahead.
I move to approve an exception to competition in authorizing the purchase of 12 2023 Ford E450 cutaway replacement vehicles, including a requisite ancillary equipment for a total cost not to exceed $1,439, $1,439,370 from Masters Transportation Incorporated per administrative policy and procedure number 110.180.a16, utilizing $1,151,496 of federal congestion mitigation air quality, otherwise known as CMAC funds, and local match of $287,874 from the Transit Vehicle Replacement Capital Projects Funds.
Second, Hanslick.
So moved by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Mr. Powers, I appreciate that the procurement process says what it is, but when we have an opportunity to have an exception to competition, unique circumstances makes sense. And I think here that does make sense, given supply chain issues and given the difficulty we may have in not being able to purchase these chassis for a number of months, if not years. I think this matters in order. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to offer just one clarification, if I could, since I'm on the JCD, the JCDS board. The comments about Swift, I think, are important, and I think Mr. Powers touched upon it. But just for clarification, one of the few positive things to come out of COVID is the realization and the development of the infrastructure for remote services, medical services, counseling, those kinds of things. And the clientele in JCDS have benefited from that. So that enables them to ride less. So it does minimize the cost for that population, and that those vehicles, I think Mr. Powers said, that still are within the county functioning. And if the vehicles aren't used, it extends their life, so there is an offset. So in a very real way, the lowering of the number of rides is a good thing. I doubt if it ever goes to zero. And I would say I don't think anyone wants to go to zero. So we have to look at these numbers very closely. I think they're fair observations, but I just wanted to clarify that that population is cloistered and is wholly dependent upon transportation, and that's a responsibility we have assumed.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Ashcraft, and I appreciate the valuable service we provide, especially to our most vulnerable residents. So thank you for that. Commissioner O'Hara, do you have a question on this item?
Yes, I do. Yes, I believe it was in 2021 that we were talking about that we needed to realign our services. And my concern is that perhaps this is a little premature to be spending this money. And I know federal money in many people's minds is free money, but it costs the taxpayers. And I'm concerned that we really have not analyzed where our needs really lie. And vulnerable populations, absolutely. The people that are in the criminal justice system, that absolutely, to get them to their court dates because we do not want them to be losing their jobs. And I mean, that there's, we really have not, in my opinion, we have not done an adequate job of really analyzing where our money should be spent. And last night, I was on 435, and there was a Casey Ride smaller bus, and it was empty. And this is what the people of Johnson County are seeing, even though the windows are darkened. So it's difficult to see. But I made a point to take a look, and I just do not believe that we have studied this adequately. And we have a steering committee. What's the name of the board that meets, that the commissioners appoint members to?
Commissioner Josh Powers with Transit, I believe you're referring to the Johnson County Transportation Council.
Transportation Council, yes.
Advisory Board, yes.
Has that advisory board been meeting on a regular basis?
We meet as necessary as policy needs and questions come up. Our next meeting will be May 19th.
When was the last meeting?
The third Friday of January of this year.
Okay, so we haven't had a meeting since the end of January.
The next meeting would have been in March, and we did not have a substantive agenda to discuss. There was nothing that, policy-wise, that needed to be discussed. So we, in working with the chair and vice chair, did not meet.
Okay.
All right, well, appreciate the comments here. And Josh, thank you very much for discussing how we can replace vehicles that are past their life in an innovative way to try to save resources for taxpayers with that. Commissioner Hanslick, do you have a question?
I just wanted to say, this is a safety issue for our most vulnerable people. The buses and vehicles we're using right now are past their useful life, and I don't see that we have, can make any other decision but to replace them to keep those folks safe.
With that, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll and the question.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
No.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, yes.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye, I have six votes in favor and one against. Is that consistent with your count?
That is correct.
Thank you very much. The matter passes. Thanks, Mr. Powers. Next, we are considering the fiscal year '24, '25 applications for the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board Grants and the Juvenile Reinvestment Grants, as well as the Juvenile Regional Collaboration Grant to the Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services. This was approved by the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board to support interventions and programming for justice-involved youth. I have Rachel Messeded from Corrections back after having presented to us on agenda review, and thank you very much for that. Either further questions or, I'm sorry, for the report that you'd like to provide for our consideration.
There is nothing further. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Hanslick.
Glad to make a motion to approve.
All right, we'll take a motion. We'll get some comments before the motion. Commissioner O'Hara.
Thank you. So I am a member on J-CAB, and I was at the meeting that we had, the presentation from people who were making requests, and then I was also at the meeting where these requests were granted to come forward to the board. The only thing I was a little disappointed in, and I think that we addressed this, and I just wanted to let the rest of the board, there was a very innovative program that was presented and a very experiential type of education in recording and broadcasting. And I think, and it was to be focused on the youth, to keep them from ever getting into the juvenile detention or the juvenile services. But we discussed this, and it seems like that there are other funding resources available that we may be able to go forward with that, and I'm looking forward to seeing how we proceed on that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
I didn't know if, I thought you were going to respond.
I don't know if that required a response. I was just saying she wanted to make sure that we continue to investigate it.
To work with that group. It's a new innovative idea.
Very good. Ms. Messeded, same question really for all of these programs, and I think you've attempted to address it. But I am not a member of J-CAB. I'm a member of C-CAB, and there are four letters in the alphabet between, so I'm sure there are lots of different programs. But the question for this program is, how do you measure success, and how will this program element contribute to those outcome measures?
Right, so thank you. Rachel Messeded with the Department of Corrections. Commissioner Ashcraft, I think, you know, the ultimate, one of the ultimate studies of success is more of a longitudinal study, which looks at what's the recidivism reduction. But given the evidence that's out there around behavior change, because we believe that behavior change is what helps to make safer communities, and that's what our evidence tells us, is the programs in this grant and that we're specifically speaking about, and then as we go through the other grants as well, is they are all evidence-based programs, and as we continue to meet sort of intermediate targets, we can look at some areas that do we know that we're hitting these targets, which will ultimately end up with reduced recidivism.
One following, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I think it's a fair point that the best outcome measures are longitudinal. You can't just say, well, one year from now, then everything's fine going forward. With this population and demands on service, I think longitudinal expectations are appropriate. Will we have, or do we have the capacity, or will we have the capacity to monitor that over time? And I don't know how many years, but is that something that these programs are designed to do or will be designed to do to make sure that we do have the long-term impacts that we're hoping for?
So if you look at reduced recidivism, we do look at it from a point, one, and I believe three years, as to reduced, for reduced recidivism. And we look at that through strictly running a records check, so to speak. And we look at what's the arrest, what's the arrest date? Has somebody been arrested, not charged, not found guilty, but actually arrested? And that's what we look at. What we don't have is, does this program specifically tie to reduced recidivism? Because it's not a unilateral, and I can't remember the word we talked about yesterday, but it's not a one program is going to fix everything. It's really a how do we wrap around services? So we don't, but we don't track the individual once they leave our services.
But to your point, the various program elements that you have work together to help or try to help to ensure that there's a long-term outcome that's positive for individuals that are justice-involved. Okay, I said it correctly. Justice-involved, that is correct.
Yes, all of our programs are going to be shown that they help to improve behaviors.
I won't say criminal ever again.
Commissioner Hanslick, how about that?
I will.
Well, I just want to make one comment before I make the motion. A couple of commissioners have mentioned that they are members of these boards, and I think it's important to recognize that in most situations, we serve as the liaison to these boards, not voting members. So I think, because I've had some folks be confused by that, so.
Yes.
I am glad to move to authorize the Johnson County Department of Corrections to submit the SFY 2024 to 2025 applications for Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board Grants in the amount of $801,546.34, the Juvenile Reinvestment Grants in the amount of $641,238, and a Juvenile Regional Collaboration Grant in the amount of $263,843.54 to the Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services, as approved by the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, to support interventions and programming for justice-involved youth.
Allen Brand, second.
So moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner, so moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Commissioner Fast.
Yes, I just, you know, I heard several times from my liaison, and, you know, I really appreciate all the time, you know, the committee takes. I know she spends a lot of hours, you know, you interviewed, went through the applications. I mean, this was my appointment's first time, and really felt very good about the choices as a collective coming together. So I just wanted to share, since I wasn't a part of the process.
And before I forget to mention it, yes, absolutely, thank you to our liaisons who participate in this process, but also thanks to the Kansas Department of Corrections, and thanks to the partnership with our legislators making sure that funding for these programs comes back to Johnson County and that we're able to provide meaningful services that reduce recidivism, especially for justice-involved youth, a very vulnerable population in our community. With that, I'd like to call a question on the motion, please.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye, I have seven votes in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
All right, well, thank you very much. Continuing with Ms. Messeded.
Yes.
We are considering approving and submitting the 10th Judicial District's 2024 Juvenile Justice Comprehensive Plan Grant Application to the Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services and authorizing the associated positions, contracts, and client services therewith. Again, Ms. Messeded, thanks for your presentation last week. Anything further you'd like to report on this one?
There's nothing further. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Fast.
I guess it was on the last one, you were, you're asking the state for additional funds for behavioral health. Have you done that before? Do they usually then appropriate additional funds, or?
That's actually for the next one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I'll wait.
Do you want to wait? Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, might as well.
Okay, yes, we have never asked for more funds than what we've been allocated. So we are taking, I guess, we've spoken with KDOC, said, can we ask for these additional funds? And they have said, go ahead and apply for them. If they are able to grant us additional funds, they will do so. If not, we have asked Mental Health to prioritize where they would like to, what they would like to take off of the additions to reach our allocation.
So about two years ago, I championed additional mental health therapists for our juvenile corrections. So we have some positions that are general funded revenue, and then some that are state, correct, that we have both sources.
So for-
That was in addition to our budget that I pushed forward, and the commission agreed.
Right, so I don't know about the mental health position specifically. I do know what we have in the Behavioral Health Grant. And right now, we have a half-time clinician that gets paid out of that grant from the Kansas Department of Corrections, and they are requesting an additional half position.
Maybe that was under the mental health budget to support juvenile corrections?
Yes, yes, they have, I actually think I do know what you're talking about. I believe that might have been through the, that they are working inside our detention center.
Yes, that's what it was.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Fast. I think these programs are incredibly important that we're looking at in this particular application, especially the intake and the supervision and case management, making sure that we provide innovative ways to work with all partners. That includes schools, that includes parents, as well as the justice-involved individuals, and making sure that we provide this system in a way that can allow individuals to access services and hopefully reduce any future contacts with the legal system. It's great not only for our budget, but more importantly, for the individual. So I think these are incredibly important programs, and again, I appreciate the partnership. Commissioner Hanslick.
Glad to make the motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the 10th Judicial District's FYI 2024 Juvenile Justice Comprehensive Plan in the amount of $1,811,753.80, as recommended by the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, and authorization of the associated positions, contracts, and client services.
Commissioner Fast, second.
So moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Fast. Commissioner O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just also want to again mention that we have a lot of volunteer services at the Juvenile Detention Center. And I was there on Tuesday afternoon for the Bible study. And absolutely, the mental health aspect of it, we do need to fund those positions so that these young people can go forward in their lives and find success. But the volunteers that are working- But the volunteers that are, that are working within the juvenile detention center, it's really quite remarkable, because I've spoken before that we have the Bible study on Tuesday afternoons, and then I believe that they have another youth function on Wednesday nights, and then they have Sunday services. And I think that it's just very important that faith, bringing the, bringing faith into the juvenile justice system, it's very powerful, and it has, it has, has made a lot of differences. And I also want to give a shout out to the Olahito School District, because they support the juvenile detention center with the educational portion. And I have been very impressed with the reading skills of the juveniles that are participating in our Bible study.
Commissioner Hanslick.
To do our job without volunteers.
I appreciate Commissioner O'Hara's comments about the volunteers, and certainly faith and spiritual growth is a part of healing for a lot of, a lot of folks. But I think it's important to recognize that none of those are required of the folks that are in the detention center. We could lose our federal funding if they're required, so just wanted to make mention of that.
Yes, they are volunteers.
With that, I'll go ahead and ask the clerk to call the question on the motion.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye, have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That is correct.
All right, and finally, Ms. Mestad, we're considering the Johnson County Department of Corrections 2024 Community Corrections Adult Comprehensive Plan and Funding Requests to the Kansas Department of Corrections. Again, thank you very much for your presentation last week. Anything further you'd like to report?
Nothing further today. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Just to confirm, this program will also have a longitudinal component, and how long, how many years out or months out will you attempt to, is verify the right word, confirm the, the success of those individuals that have been involved in the program? Do you have any current plans or expectations?
Right now, we're looking at, I think we have one year, three years. I believe we may go to five years. Oh, one, two, and three.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and to Commissioners Fast's earlier point, I appreciate that we're looking to meet the increasing behavioral health challenge that we have within our community, and that includes those who are incarcerated or within the justice system. So I appreciate the Department of Corrections looking to increase that resource to individuals.
Commissioner Fast.
Yes, about a year ago, I met with your community reentry specialists and case managers, hearing, you know, how I could be a voice for some of the challenges. And housing was one of their, the critical challenges. They talked about finding, you know, rental housing, Section 8 landlords who will take someone who has, you know, coming out of jail. And so I guess, you know, at that time, we didn't have the housing coordinator, which really provided me a lot of energy to push forward that housing coordinator. But how are we working together with that housing coordinator and the landlord, you know, recruiter, new position? Is that something you're starting to do or will do? It seems like that, you know, your, your needs to find rental housing should be a top need of our housing department, too.
Yeah, absolutely. That's something that is on our radar to continue looking at. Housing is probably one of the biggest barriers that we have with our clients, and so we do try to address that through vouchers. But I think working with that housing coordinator and working with other resources in the community to help look at, how can we, because we do supervise on the adult side, all felons, people that have been convicted of felonies, how can we continue to provide them a safe place to stay?
All right, is there a motion on this? Commissioner Hanslick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize the Johnson County Department of Corrections SFY 2024 Community Corrections Adult Comprehensive Plan and Funding Requests for submission to the Kansas Department of Corrections in an amount not to exceed $2,633,452.3.
Commissioner Fast, second.
A move by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Fast. Commissioner Hanslick, did you have a question or comment?
I just wanted to share that one of the most valuable resources that I have found in terms of looking at crime statistics is the Kansas Bureau of Investigation website. If you go under Public Information, they have crime statistics by year, law enforcement statistics, meth statistics, marijuana eradication statistics, and domestic violence and rape statistics. And so if you're looking to make some comparisons, that is a very good resource for, for that information.
Thank you very much for a good resource. With that, I'll ask the clerk to call the question, or take a roll on the question.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye, have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That is correct.
All right, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Ms. Mestad, and thank you again to our team at the Department of Corrections, as well as our partners at the state. Thank you, it's a crucially important service. With that, we have item number 11, considering the Board of County Commissioners' priorities for '23 and '24. Ms. Postock Ferguson.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman and Commissioners, good morning. So we're back now talking with you, I think, the third time now about these, and we've had a lot of discussion, you had a lot in public session last week. So staff presented the draft '20, '23, '24, the OCC priorities in the areas of infrastructure, staff, housing, health, and safety. At the meeting last week, a lot of discussion, but no changes were directed to staff, so I stand for questions and see what else you would like me to present on these.
Thank you very much. We do have one public comment, so Ms. Postock Ferguson, I ask you to step aside just for two minutes, and we'll welcome Ben Hobart to provide a comment. And when the clerk is ready, Mr. Hobart, you may proceed.
Ben Hobart, Westwood Hills. Serving and informing the citizens of this county should always be the primary focus of this board. The B.O.C.C. priorities, based on this, I think should be as follows. One, reverse the adversarial relationship with the citizens. Allow public comments to be preserved for prosperity. Control the budget and the headcount of county employees. Focus on efficient delivery of services and meeting your fiduciary duty to citizens. Two, restore your credibility. This board blew up the request for proposal process when entering into the early termination agreement with Evergreen Living Innovations. The board betrayed the other bidders. If I were someone responding to an RFP with this county, I would be very concerned that this board will pick favorites and not give everyone a fair shot at any contra. Secondly, Commissioner Myers indicated that each commissioner can self-police conflicts of interest and do it behind the scenes, as Chief Counsel Peg Trent indicated. Now the public is left to wonder. For public transparency, this is not acceptable. The grant of every contract is now suspect because of a lack of transparency with the citizens of this county. Three, regarding healthcare, focus on the risk factors that are resulting in adverse health outcomes. Obesity is target number one. Mental health is target number two. I don't know what sustainability has to do with healthcare. Number four, report on the COVID decision-making of the last three years, along with an accounting of how all grant money was spent. This has been a disaster of hype, fear-mongering, and flushing of constitutional rights. A critical assessment is necessary, so that this bad decision-making does not happen again. Five, the briefing sheet is really disappointing in terms of its depth or lack thereof. I don't know if we're serving venerable populations or vulnerable populations. I don't know what a justice-involved resident is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobart. All right, I'll ask Ms. Postock Ferguson to come back up to the dais. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Mr. Chair, when you're ready, I would like to make a motion. I, you know, we've talked about this a lot. We've had several open meetings, being very, very transparent. Most of those meetings were all filmed, and so when you're ready, Mr. Chair, I do have a motion.
I will come back to you for that. Commissioner O'Hara.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Postock Ferguson, in our, in our meeting last week on the Committee of the Whole, under public safety and health, we were discussing how everything was going to be viewed through the lens of DEI. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, I just want to let the public know that the board's idea of diversity, equity, and inclusion, which I have found to be division, exclusion, and inequality, is that two of the board members offered several amendments, and absolutely none of them, none of them, were seriously considered and failed five to two. That doesn't sound very inclusive. And I am just astounded that we continue to tout this DEI fairy tale, because it is not what is happening on the ground. And I absolutely will not support these board priorities, because the board has not acted in a way of being inclusive in any manner.
Commissioner Allen Brand, how about the motion?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Board of County Commissioners' priorities for 2023, 2024.
Second, Hanslick.
So moved by Commissioner Allen Brand, seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I also have reservations about the board priorities. I do commend the board for attempting to offer a more expansive consideration of priorities than what we've had in years past. We, and I was on the board, so I will say, we were somewhat in a rut in terms of the focus that we had, not that any of them were bad, I don't want to make that impression. So I commend the board for trying to look more comprehensively, but I have reservations because there is not an emphasis on what I consider a critical responsibility for elected officials, and that is to promote and encourage the efficient use of resources. I think effectiveness is, is well-meaning and well-measured, and always is by staff, but that efficiency component is lacking. And I also have to agree that while there have been moments where these items have been presented, the debate on different definitions and understanding of several components, one of which Commissioner O'Hara pointed out, have been limited. And because there is such a huge shift in the board's priorities, I would submit that we have not had a full and fair debate on the item, and consequently, my vote will reflect that concern.
Well, Commissioner Ashcraft, I appreciate that. While I respectfully disagree that we had a retreat to discuss this, we also had an opportunity last week, and I think we had some robust discussion here. We've also been discussing priorities throughout the last four months, and frankly, even before that. And I think we heard directly from our constituents, and those are the people that I am listening to with these board priorities. We heard resoundingly last November what their priorities are. And while I can appreciate that some who find themselves in the minority here may not agree with those, these are the priorities that the people of Johnson County want us to focus upon, and that's why I'm glad to support them.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Just a, just a point of order, and I appreciate Mr. Hobart pointing it out that, that unfortunately, the briefing sheet under housing does say venerable populations, which should be vulnerable populations, so just want to clarify that.
All right. Commissioner Fast.
Yeah, and I brought this out to our county manager, and I felt like our retreat, we had like 45 minutes on these priorities, and we had it cut off. I brought it up this year that we had more, should have more time in a retreat, because the same thing happened two years ago. And so one of the things that we had talked about in the retreat is importance of mental health and aging. It was on a different PowerPoint slide, and then when we cut off, we were just on the last PowerPoint slide. So, I mean, I hope the outcomes, that's, these are the top two items from our citizen survey, to invest more funds in mental health and aging. I'm going to be working on kind of a pilot community resources forum to, I was going to make a motion to add that today, but I decided best to try it out myself, to see if it's a good idea to inform residents in my district about aging, transit, mental health, housing, and, but I hope that at least one, I know you're going to come forth with outcomes that we integrate that citizen survey. The other one I talked about at Parks, and not a top priority, is conservation, you know? And I know these are, these are, to me, these are more vision, you know? Commissioner Hanslick and I have been a lot at nonprofit boards. To me, these feel like vision, not really goals and outcomes. I'm a real outcome person. I like to see each year what I've done. And so, do you see yourself bringing back some outcomes? Or department directors will present that during the budget?
So, two things. One is the next step, should you approve these today? Because we're really, it's really the board priority. So when the board's ready, then what staff will do is do the action steps, and then report quarterly or regularly as things come up. When I put together the budget, which is the single most important policy document for the year, as you all know, we will look, we look heavily at the board priorities and the citizen survey, to answer your other question, when we're looking at what we recommend for our programs and for the year.
Yeah, and I want to commend Commissioner Fast on that prioritization of aging and mental health, and we just briefly discussed it, and when you're ready, I'd be happy to support how we can go about making that a reality here for not only the residents of the first, but for all the county. So thank you for your focus there on. With that, I'd ask the clerk to call a question on the motion.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
No.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye, we have five votes in favor and two against. Is that consistent with your count?
That is correct.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much, Ms. Postock Ferguson. With that, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and stay right there, and to give us your manager's memo for this week.
Yes, I will introduce our first topic, and then I've got two more, which I will probably do back over there. But I'd like Susan Pekerek to come forward, General Manager, R.A. Wastewater, and she's going to talk to you and highlight some recruitment efforts that we thought you would be interested in, as we've talked so much about workforce challenges. And this will give you an example of what one department's doing, and we will share more as appropriate. So Susan?
Ms. Pekerek, before you start your presentation, I just wanted to again commend the Wastewater Department on their Capstone Award last Thursday night. Unfortunately, due to the Parks Board meeting, I was unable to join you in the celebration, but, or, excuse me, the Library Board meeting. We had the Parks meeting last night. But that's just such an honor for the county, and we, again, get to be good cheerleaders of what your department continues to do. So congratulations again.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Chairman. You know, we were actually commenting, it's not every day a wastewater project gets recognized as an infrastructure project of the year, so we're very proud of it. So I appreciate that recognition again. So thanks, appreciate your support. So Susan Pekerek with Wastewater, and I'm really excited to be here today to tell you a little bit about our recruitment efforts that have been going on over the last several months. I have a couple of folks I'd like to introduce that are with me here today. Melissa Reeves is our Community Relations Manager. Jose Leon is our Director of Operations and Maintenance. And so they've been doing a great deal of work, working with our HR partner, as well as several other departments I'll highlight here. So, so far for 2023, our wastewater team members have attended eight job fairs. In fact, they're at a job fair right now, which is great, and as well as Career Day events that engage students as young as eighth grade through adults of any age. Additional, let's see, we have another event scheduled for next week as well. We want to make sure that we're reaching potential candidates, as well as future public servants from a variety of backgrounds. We're attending events throughout the KC metro area and Johnson County. I think the job fair today is in fact at De Soto Schools, if I remember correctly. We also participated in the Community Supported Employment Program. Some of you might know that as CSEP. They had a job fair, and that's where we can recruit people who have been who have traditionally faced barriers to employment. We've also been very purposeful about attending ready-to-work high school career fairs. These are specific to students that aren't necessarily planning to attend college after graduation, and through these events, we're able to introduce them to wastewater as a quality career path regardless of post-high school education. We worked with our DTI department to create a URL that can better direct folks to our jobs. It's jobs.jcw.org. Let's see. So at the job fairs, we actually hand out a variety of materials Melissa's created. We've got specific job cards, so folks can learn about our jobs, and there's pay it includes pay and benefits information on these, as well as, again, directing them to that URL. We also have some fun swag to hand out, so they'll remember us when they leave our table and perhaps think about us later as they're going through their career search. We're also engaging in community events. So for example, the Westwood Easter Egg Hunt. It's an opportunity for kids to see our trucks and provide tours of our we provide tours of our facilities to school, as well as community organizations. We're also building an internship program in collaboration with the Johnson County Innovation Team. We hope to launch that by summertime. It's open to students and community, any community member, regardless of education. Additionally, we're planning on doing open interviews and job screening events in coordination with our H R partners, where potential candidates can interview on the spot for jobs and actually see work in action. So a couple of things I meant to highlight on the job fairs, you know, they're actually staff doing the work, so they get to talk to somebody who's actually doing the work and find out a lot about the job and answer questions about that. We also have cards that we can hand out, you know, might run across somebody that you think would be a great fit for the county, and we can hand those out as well. But last but not least, we recently launched a campaign called hashtag for the W. I'm going to try not to sound too age myself too much here as I'm talking about this, but it really helps connect our work with the larger mission of our organization, to protect the environment and to support our community. And so the slogan for this campaign is for the work, for the water, for the world. And I think Linda, can you help me cue this up? Let you watch our our video here. There we go.
The early risers, the night owls, the teachers, the science buffs, the road warriors, the friendly voices, and the helping hands. We're all different, but we are all here for the same mission, to ensure the renewal of life's essential resource. Here for the work, here for the water, here for the world. Johnson County Waste Water.
So with that, I'll wrap up my comments, but I just I'm incredibly proud of what they've done. I think it's a great way to, you know, continue. This is for the yeah, this is for the short term. We're doing the career fairs are for short term, but these other things are really for long term, because, you know, this is a long game. We need folks don't necessarily think of wastewater as a career, but we really want to start engaging folks and getting into schools and having them think about wastewater and renewing life's essential resources, a potential career for them.
Hashtag for the dub. I like it.
There you go. Hashtag for the dub. I see, I knew I wouldn't say it right.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Pekerek, again, I always say that you're the Disneyland of wastewater. And I'm always so proud of what you guys are doing, and I attended the first part of the awards ceremony and job well done. You know, a couple of things that keep and I've shared this a lot, because I've been working a lot with so much industry and workforce needs. So I was at a meeting with Panasonic, and they were saying their target market is middle school. And so that really kind of came home to me. And then I was at a hospital board meeting, and the doctors are we need to get to the middle school for wellness and workforce. So as you're talking today, and one thing I was going to do was put together a round table of discussion, excuse me, a discussion of how we could all work together to achieve that, and including the schools all have industrial. I know my grandson is in middle school, sixth grade, and they do these projects. And I don't know if you've ever thought about that. You probably have, but it might be something that we could all work together to to join with our schools, to start early.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think that's great. And I know that's something actually that Jose and Melissa have been doing, is developing those relationships, because those are the folks that we want to make aware of what we have to offer.
I'd be happy to help.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Thank you. So Ms. Pekerek, where are we as far as vacancies now? How's the how does the employee situation look?
I appreciate you asking. So I took a quick snapshot this morning just before I came, and so last summer, our highest vacant and I'm focusing really on the Operations and Maintenance Division, which is the largest division in our department and tends to be the place where we have the hardest time filling positions. Back in June, we had 27 vacancies out of about 150, 155 positions. So we had last June, we had about 27 vacancies out of about 155 positions. And as of, I think, last week, we had 10. So so we are making some progress. We do unfortunately still lose some folks, because there are, you know, higher-paying jobs out there, and they they are leaving us for those reasons. But I think, you know, this outreach campaign, and I think, you know, letting them come in and see the, you know, the work that we do, the purpose we have, I think that's really paying off.
So it's approximately 6% vacancy rate at this at this point?
Yes, that sounds about right. I hadn't do them didn't do the math, but yeah. And that's just for that division.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Posto Ferguson. First of all, thank you, Ms. Pekerek. Ms. Posto Ferguson, would you like to continue your report, please?
Yes, and one thing I'd like to say in conjunction with Susan and Waste Water's efforts, H R, Will Coys here representing H R as well, and I know it was a partnership, and the H R department assists all of our departments on these types of initiatives also. So it's kind of a partnership. If in case Susan didn't mention that, and maybe she did already. So the next item is another opportunity to for you to be proud about some of our services. I'll ask Mike Brower to come forward, our Criminal Justice Coordinator. As you know, you all know that we were on the national stage last week hosting National Association of Counties Familiar Faces Initiative in their site visit, many of you, and thank you to those of you that were at various events to meet those across the country that wanted to come learn about Johnson County and the things that we're doing. So Mike, do you want to give a highlight, please?
Thank you, Manager. Just just briefly for you guys, for those of you who did not hear me talking about this constantly for the last month, but Johnson County was selected by the National Association of Counties as a Familiar Faces Initiative peer learning site last fall. Four counties across the country received this honor, and so last week, we were privileged by the support from Naco to host 13 counties from around the country, including the Pew Charitable Trust, Council State Government's Justice Center, Carnegie Mellon University, Kansas Association of Counties, and Netsmart. County staff from seven different departments presented how the Criminal Justice Advisory Council has led data-driven projects to serve residents who have frequent contact with the emergency services, those we call familiar faces. These projects have been aided by aided by the University of Illinois Chicago, Notre Dame University, Carnegie Mellon University, as well as our Justice Information Management System, or GIMS, in our Department of Technology and Innovation. We appreciate the Johnson County Commissioners, those of you who were able to take time out of your schedule to not only participate in some of the presentations and activities, but as well as provide some of that technical support to other Commissioners and supervisors from around the company that attended. A link has been provided in the manager's report of the Johnson County's case study, which National Association of Counties wrote and released last week. And then just finally, I she's not here today, but I want to publicly thank Susan Meyer, who was doing so much work. She made 18 or 16 liters of coffee on Wednesday, as well as took care of all of the refreshments and logistics to make this event, which was hosted at our beautiful courthouse. And the facilities there were just tremendous for for doing hosting a group. We had 35 member 35 people total attending, so.
Was that the coffee order for Commissioner Hanslick?
That's yeah, that's right. I think Commissioner Hanslick did request some coffee. We got her some.
Well, Mr. Brower, first of all, congratulations on a successful event. First of all, for being recognized, for being able to put Johnson County on the map nationally for our work and the work that you do with CJAC, amongst other organizations leveraging technology to help justice-involved individuals, but then put on a great show for them. I was happy to be involved, and I was happy that various Commissioners, Commissioner Hanslick, Commissioner Fast, and others were able to be a part of this, these various presentations or programming moments. And so congratulations to you, and congratulations to the entire team, Susan and others, that made this an incredible success. And we look forward to what we might implement from what we have learned from from others, which is the whole point of Naco and other similar such organizations. So appreciate that.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Chair, I also want to thank all the staff. Mike, your involvement in it, the chair, the county manager's office. It was a perfect opportunity. I didn't attend everything, but it was a perfect opportunity to meet with different Commissioners, talk about their budget, comparing it to our budget, comparing programming. And if you don't learn something from that, you're not listening, and that is key to making us better. So I really appreciate, and I know it took a lot of work, and thank you for that.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Oh, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And and I really am very saddened that the same attitude of transparency, inclusiveness, was not shown with the Sunflower Summit, and that I was blocked from videoing it. Actually, the the event was canceled and then on Zoom, and then I did not get notification of that until 11:20 on Monday, and it ended at noon. So we talk about wanting to be inclusive, but then when the rubber hits the road, sometimes we're not. So I look forward to improving that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Brower, thank you so much. Appreciate it. For the report, Ms. Posto Ferguson?
Two more items. I think I said total three, but I actually have four, because I wanted to update you on an additional one that wasn't in the original memo. So first, a public hearing notice. The City of Lenexa will be conducting a public hearing on Tuesday, May 16th, to consider approving the adoption of redevelopment TIF Project Plan 1K for the city center TIF district. The proposed project is for is for constructing a six-story office building, a two-level parking structure, surface parking, landscaping sidewalks, related side amenities, signage, and associated infrastructure improvement. And then the last item is regarding Corinth Library. So most of the Commissioners, or not all, were at the joint board, B O C C, Johnson County Library Board meeting, and there is an update that I just wanted to make sure you're aware of. The Corinth Library was mentioned at that meeting. On Monday of this week, the Prairie Village City Council approved city staff to enter into an M O U with the library. The library is excited to partner with the city on on a study for potential co-location as a part of the Comprehensive Library Master Plan. The Corinth branch is scheduled in the C I P for a study in late 2024, and replacement beginning in 2026. So I just wanted to offer that update, since we just met with them, and then there was information that same day or later. So thank you, Chairman. That's it for my report.
Well, thank you very much. Exciting things continue to happen in Johnson County.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner O'Hara?
I have just a couple of questions for the county manager.
Is it related to her report?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. On the Lenexa City, that that is already an existing TIF district, and this isn't just a project area that is that is going forward?
That's correct. The hearings for the adoption of the redevelopment plan of the existing TIF.
Okay, I just want to explain how these tax incentives, they go for large projects. And I was at the Spring Hill Chamber of Commerce breakfast a week and a half ago, and I was sitting across the table from a couple, Shiloh and Matt Little, and they are building a 10,000-plus square foot building off of 191st and 169 Highway, and they're opening a wear a I'm sorry, hardware store. And I said, so did you get any any tax incentives? And their reply to me was, we asked, but we're too small. We're too we're too small.
Commissioner O'Hara, thank you very much. You'll have time during your Commissioner's comments to make such comments.
This is this is connected with with.
No, it's not. But thank you. Thank you very much.
An example of how.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Hara. We're going to move on to the legislative update from Mark Dapp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For state legislature, just a reminder that the legislature is still on break. They will return next Wednesday for omnibus session. Conference committees are scheduled to begin on Monday and Tuesday both, and the leadership has indicated that they have a desire to adjourn on February or on Friday, the 28th, so that would provide three days of veto overrides. And there are still a considerable number of budget-related items and the K-12 budget that still need to be passed, so it's going to be a very full agenda. Just for a bit of a recap to date, there have been 52 bills that have been signed by the governor. There are another 38 bills that are awaiting signature. As of now, there have been six bills that have been vetoed by the governor, and I'll go into a little bit of detail on those. But there's a lack of a formal report or memo this week, just given the amount of late-breaking news. For instance, there were 14 bills that were signed by the governor yesterday. Just a couple of highlights there was a $5 million increase to the short-line rail improvement railroad tracks, and also the drop, the Deferred Retirement Option Program for capers. When the legislature comes back, we'll be watching any number of tax-related bills, most specifically Senate Bill 8, which includes the homestead property tax exemption expansion, but also includes government competition language that would provide full sales and property tax exemptions for those businesses that have a government competition. That has passed the House. It has not yet been considered by the Senate, so we will watch it on the Senate side, and then any possible governor's action related to that particular piece of legislation. There were three bills that were vetoed yesterday. Most perhaps most notably is the 7:00 PM deadline for advanced ballots to be received by Election Day. Neither of those bills are passed by a veto-proof majority in the House or the Senate, but we do expect that they would be reconsidered for possible veto override when the legislature reconvenes. With that, that is kind of the updates on the state legislative side. I do have some news related to federal updates, but if we do have some questions, it might be more appropriate for state legislative questions.
State legislative questions. Commissioner O'Hara?
Thank you. Mr. Dapp, Senate Bill 8 on that homestead exemption, is that only on the 20 mills, the state 20 mills, or is that on the total tax bill?
It's on the total tax bill.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the state legislative issues?
Okay.
You get a break this week, next week, not so much.
For some good news on the federal level, we have made four requests for member-directed spending, AKA earmarks, and I would like to provide an update on those. There were three requests that were made to Representative David's office specifically. The first was for the Emergency Operations Center to be upgraded. It's located in the lower level of this building. There was an additional 1.5 million for the cost of relocating sewers along Highway 69 due to that expansion, and $800,000 that was requested for basic passenger infrastructure for transit. On last week's update, Representative David has included two of those projects, the Emergency Operations Center and the Highway 69 sewer relocation, on her list of 15 member-directed spending projects, so those have been formally advanced. We did just receive word last night that Senator Moran has also included the Highway 69 sewer relocation project on part of his Senate request, so that project has been recommended by both the House and the Senate. We will have official word tomorrow, but we did make one additional request to Senator Moran's office, which was for the air traffic control tower. Moran's office, which was for the air traffic control tower at New Century. We have been in frequent conversations with staff, but we will get an official announcement as to whether or not that project has been included for appropriations tomorrow. So, of the four total projects, we also have been led to believe that Senator Moran will be requesting the basic passenger infrastructure request. So, we should have all four of the projects that had been requested by Johnson County to be formally recommended. We'll have a further update when that is official from the Senate side, but so far, very good news from what we've seen in the appropriations process.
Well, Mr. Depp, thank you so much, and thank you to Representative David's and Senator Moran for their partnership, as well as a partnership with the Ferguson Group that helps us continue to bring these resources back to Johnson County. And so, we're very thankful to have good partners at multiple layers of government. Thank you, Mr. Depp. With that, I've had a request that we take our break now. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for commissioner's comments and agenda review. So, a five-minute break. Thank you all very much. Board of County Commissioners meeting. At this time, we are going to do public comments, or excuse me, commissioners' comments. Habit there. We'll start with Commissioner O'Hara today.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And speaking of public comments, if we had them broadcast, I wouldn't have to read them off every week. But anyway, they are continued to be banned for broadcast, because you good people out there certainly wouldn't want to know what your friends are saying at the public comment time at the county. Anyway, we had 12 that signed up. Debbie Detmer, Shawnee Transparency, Stephanie Berlin Transparency, Jill O'Connor had comments on the Sunflower Summit. That was quite a fiasco, but anyway, Gary Morgan on transparency, Stephen Snidz on lack of transparency, Tom Carpenter. This is the second week that he has spoken, and he is an elderly gentleman. I don't know him personally, but he is really saddened that he cannot hear public comments and is begging that we rescind that ban. Ben Hobert was on COVID shots being issues for children and imploring parents to be very careful before they proceed on that. Marvin Michu was on transparency, and then he had some comments on election integrity. Nancy Moneymaker, Rural Johnson County, she was going to speak on environmental disasters, but she decided that she was going to talk about a new county program, VIBE. And I think part of the VIBE program is the pronoun pens that the county has purchased, and HR has now said that our employees can be wearing the pronoun pens. I will be asking, and I have asked legal staff to put this on the agenda for review by the board, because I have a lot of concerns about this. And John Anderson, he was very concerned about how we continue to divide people instead of bringing them together. Steve Klein was scheduled to speak, but he was in a car accident. But I'm happy to report, his wife texted me and said that all is well. And Maria Holliday was speaking on the $4 million that the library board is proposing to refresh the library in Spring Hill. And I have been in conversations with the officials down there, and they know nothing about this, and they are rather dismayed that $4 million is going to be put forward towards this, rather than looking forward to a new facility. Then the other thing that I was talking about was the fact that the tax incentives. I was at the Spring Hill Chamber meeting a week and a half ago, and I was sitting across the table from this couple that are building a hardware store. And I said, "Congratulations on your courage to want to go forward with that," and naturally asked, "So, did you get tax incentives?" And again, the answer was, "We're too small." And that is, and I've been in this debate for 20 years with especially the city of Olathe, that we really need to be focusing on the small businesses rather than the large businesses, because large businesses have total access to all sorts of funding. Then I received an email, and this gentleman's name is Mike Zakora, and he asked that someone read this. And his email to the commissioners, "Cutting the county mill levy by a minuscule amount is a slap in the face. The only meaningful, serious fiduciary responsibility is revenue-neutral budget. Start from there, and there only, then add 5% to 6% for inflation. Not enough taxpayers are savvy about or don't care to know about revenue-neutral, or they would be storming the county commission and city council and school board meetings." Those taxpayers would say, "By cutting the mill levy by a minuscule amount, you are raising my taxes." And then his closing paragraph, "Please incorporate my remarks today in today's commission meeting minutes." So, there you are. You're in the minutes. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. Last night, we had great attendance by all the commissioners at the joint session of the Johnson County Parks and Recreation District and the Board of County Commissioners. I thought it was a wonderful presentation by Johnson County Parks and Recreation District employees and staff. And I'm just awed by what all Johnson County Parks and Recreation encompasses. They do so much and so much good, and they are so well-respected throughout Johnson County. One of the items that I brought up after everybody left and we continued with our Parks and Recreation meeting, general meeting, I talked a little bit about child services. You know, it's an item that was brought up. Commissioner Allen Brand spoke to it, and I know we've all received information from residents. It's something that is busting at the seams, and we're, you know, it's just sad for me to know that we're not able to fill all of the need that's out there for childcare services, especially with our before-and-after-school daycare options. A lot of that is because of workforce. I would say that's the majority of the issue, is not being able to hire the workforce that's needed to provide more services for our residents. But again, I thought it was a great meeting, a great update. As far as vibe, that's not a new program. It's been around as long as I've been on this commission, and I believe before. So, I don't want people to think that that is something that's new to the county. And so, anyway, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to just have a quick review of some of the things that have happened in the last week. We did have last week the Joint Library Board. It's that time of year, and we had some great discussions about what is coming down the pike, including the refreshing of some of our smaller, more rural libraries. And those have been conversations that have been going on as long as I've been here. And I know the District III previous commissioner, Steve Clicker, was very much an advocate for refreshing these libraries, as well as his appointees. So, that has been in the works for a long time. We also, this week, some of us from the county attended the Mark Connected KC 2050 Planning Workshop. Connected KC 2050 is the metro area transportation plan that we are required to do by the federal government in order to receive funding, and it's time to start doing some renewal work on that. So, there were probably 100 people there, including a number of people, including, I see Lee Kellenberger in the room. He was there, as well as Josh Powers and Brian Alferman. Yesterday, we had our crisis, mental health crisis continuum of care meeting and did some discussions of final recommendations to be presented to the Criminal Justice Advisory Council next month, and also had a prep meeting for our Regional Housing Partnership Strategy Committee at Mark. Our next meeting is April 24th. But the main thing I wanted to mention today was how my heart has been so saddened by what we've seen this week with the shooting of an innocent young boy who went to someone's door and was shot in the head. And this situation shows to me that we absolutely need to have these conversations about perceptions of race. It is impacting all of our lives. We can't feel safe when everyone can't be safe. So, I am very proud of Johnson County for being willing to have these kinds of conversations, because it's a reality. It's a reality that black and brown people are treated differently in our society. And, you know, when we say we are colorblind, that is a cop-out, and that is insulting, because we need to see color. We need to see that black and brown people have different experiences in our community. And how can we educate ourselves to make sure that we are checking ourselves for our own misunderstandings of race? So, my prayers and my heart goes out to Ralph Yarle for his continuing recovery. My heart goes out to the gentleman who shot him. I hope that he and other people who have been frightened by people of another race will see this as a learning experience. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanslick. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things. Couple of things. Will respond to Commissioner Hanslick. I don't know if she was directing her comments at me specifically, but I, I think it's a fair point because last week, the county manager expressed some concerns because I use the, the phrase colorblind in the context of, I would say, as Martin Luther King did, not to judge someone by the color of their skin, but the content of their character. Colorblindness should not be a factor in our decision-making. It should be based on merit. That did not intend to imply that it should be culturally blind because people have very distinct and rich cultures that should be recognized and celebrated. And I very much am supportive of that and embrace that, but also believe in merit. So I, I don't know if that changes any of the dynamic of the conversation. And I suspect that we should continue to have the conversation about race in various venues and on various topics. I think it's an issue that has been longstanding in this community, in this nation, and it will continue to be so until we can talk about it and try to come to a full and fair understanding of what that means to each of us and to the community as a whole. So having said that, Mr. Chairman, I will offer, yesterday at the Parks Board meeting, and I appreciate Commissioner Myers mentioning that, I received some good-natured ribbing because I, from time to time, do speak from this podium about events that occurred in the previous week. And this past week was Orthodox Easter on Sunday and of course, Tax Day yesterday and, Commissioner Hanslick's birthday yesterday. And those, those are events, but, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you know this, but I'm a, I'm a semi-native Oki. And this time of year, I have carried this for 28 years now and I, and I keep thinking, well, you know, I'll get through this, but I still struggle with it because yesterday was the 28th anniversary of the worst case of domestic terrorism, or at least one of the worst cases in American history. And I was there. I, I was fortunate, I was downtown when the Murrow Building was bombed. I was fortunate because an overpass was between where I was and the Murrow Building. And as the bomb occurred and the collapse occurred, it did not hit the base of our structure, but it rippled across the roof. And of course, we had no idea what it was, but it rippled across very quickly and didn't tear the top of the, the roof off, but the dust and the particles and the ceiling panels, some of them came down and it was, it was, you know, some people thought it was an earthquake, plane crash, whatever. But that, that has stayed with me and many times from this, many years from this podium, if not every year, I talk about Gabriel Bruce. He, his older sister, mother and grandmother went into the Social Security Administration building that morning to get their social security cards. Only, only his mother came out. And that has been one of those things that has been impressed upon me that by mindless actions of an individual can have profound effects, not just on the 186, excuse me, 168 people that lost their lives, but the, the people who remember that and experienced it. Because even years later, people who survived the blast in the Murrow Building, I worked with a gentleman from the Department of Transportation. I was working for the Turnpike Authority down there and we were in a meeting, talking about whatever. And all of a sudden, he began bleeding profusely from his arm. And it was as if he had been shot. It was a horrible cut. And he later explained, he was in the Murrow Building and as I understood it, glass shrapnel enters the body and cannot be detected by, at that time, x-rays and will eventually work its way out. So there are probably dozens, if not hundreds, of individuals still to this day in Oklahoma City that, you know, I remember the dust coming down from the ceiling, but they can very well wake up with a piece of glass protruding from their skin. And those things affect us deeply. So I apologize, I appreciate you letting me drone on about that, but that was one of those events in your life that, that marks where you were before, during and after. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashcraft. Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Ashcraft, I always enjoy your history. I always learn something and I appreciate that you bringing that forward. And Commissioner Hanslick, I appreciate you addressing some concerns and, you know, it's not just about color. It's about your weight, it's about your looking different, it's about, could be about your religion. We should all feel, in this county, if somebody wants to put a bunch of things on the back of their, of their employee card, by God, let them do that. It's their right. And, you know, I have a granddaughter that's in the sixth grade and she is, she's not in the sixth, I take that back, but she would love that. She is in the fourth grade. She's 10. And she is a, she just is a little sports fanatic. And so she's got a short haircut, wears all kinds of soccer jerseys. And I picked her up from school one day and asked her what was wrong. You know, she's athletic, she's thin, I mean, she's, you know, and I said, what's wrong? And she said, well, none of the girls don't like me. And I said, what do you mean? And she said, because I, during the recesses, I always play soccer with the boys. And I said, well, won't they invite those girls? And she said, no, because they don't know the rules. And so she said, they pick on me. And I said, well, you know, you need to stand strong for what, you know, what you believe in and what you wear, you go ahead. And maybe you need to ask those girls, maybe you could help them and with some instructions on soccer. And enough's enough, but there's all kinds of people feeling discriminated against and it's about all those things. And I'm proud of our county for standing up and making sure that our staff and people that are in our county feel that they can wear or do what, you know, what they want. So anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on. I like to attend periodically ribbon cuttings and small businesses that open up. And I attended a, an event in DeSoto called The Path Less Taken. She's a hypnotist. And I, I've never done that, but I'm thinking maybe a couple of us ought to go down there. Get our heads set, you know, right? But also, again, I attended the Parks and Rec. And Commissioner Myers was sure to point out that they were rated number one in the survey. And Commissioner Hanslick said that it was a close second to the library. But, you know, it's amazing how lucky we are to live in Johnson County and have, you know, they provide sports, art, childcare, theater, golf and parks. And that was a lifesaver during COVID. People were able to go out there and enjoy that. And I'm very proud of that. And I received emails last night and also phone calls, upset with me because I did not attend the planning meeting. The, it's, it's a joint board meeting that we have for all of our commissioners to attend. We're in budget hearings. That was on my calendar. We worked with all the commissioners here about what would work and when, and that's when it was scheduled. I would have loved to have been there. I've reached out to Jay and Sean and the staff and they have been tremendous. I'm working to try to have a open house, not try to have, I'm working on an open house that will be joint probably in September. But again, I could not be there because I, there was no way humanly possible, I was not going to eat my dinner and then leave. There's no way I could have made it from Prairie Village down to DeSoto. So I want you to know why I didn't attend and I have reached out to several emails and phone calls. So anyway, thank you to the staff. I felt like it was very well received. And again, there's just more questions about not only what's on in the county, but also what's going on in the city. And people are interested. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Allenbrand. Commissioner Fast.
Yes, I just want to say that I'm very excited to see the, the next steps the Prairie Village City Council took on Monday with their library. About a year ago, I brought together the, the library, the city and the library board meetings to see how the three entities could collaborate. Our library board didn't have the Corinth on the next step of the CAIP. It was after the Blue Valley. There was a lot of differences between where the city council was in their planning and our library board was. So for me, it's just really exciting when all parties come together and Blue Valley is now after the Corinth Library CAIP. And then the Prairie Village wants to enter into this memorandum of agreement with the Y, the county, and we see that partnership in Merriam. And sometimes, you know, it's, cats are going this way and then all of a sudden, they come together and, and, and that's when I, it's really exciting to see that in our county. Friday, went to the Parade of Hearts and I don't know if our county will have one, our county government. The Mission has a wonderful one, Overland Park does. I'm excited to see these local artists who create these hearts and how we will see them across the county. Also, attended the Johnson County Mental Health collaborates with Kansas City Mental Health of America and they had an event and really highlighted the partnerships that we have with our mental health center. And that partnership was exciting to see and how many more people are served when we work together with Wyandotte County on these services.
Thank you, Commissioner Fast. And I'll be brief because I got a lot to hit. There's going to be a study session today at 1:00 to discuss housing program updates. It's going to be in the lower level, room 201 of this building. Overland Park's Data City Address is coming up on Tuesday, April 25th. Good luck to Kurt Skug. It's at the Aspiria campus at 4:00. We'll have a joint meeting with our airport board on Wednesday morning, April 26th at 8:00 a.m. I want to thank the commissioners who came to the library meeting and those who stuck around last night for the Parks and Rec meeting. It was really exciting to hear about the legacy plan and how the parks have a huge, not only cultural, but economic impact into Johnson County. A return on investment that you couldn't get with really any other fiscal product. So exciting things for sure in our county. Like Commissioner Hanslick, I, and I think everybody in our region was incredibly saddened by the tragic events involving Ralph Yarle. I'm excited to hear that he's at home and that he is recovering. Our prayers go to not only him, but his mother and to the entire community, but to all those who continue to struggle with, with the scorns of gun violence in our community. And I appreciate our, our conversation and our goals that we've established here today. Not only as it relates to sustainability, which has a huge impacts as the effects of changing climate are affecting Johnson County, but there's economic impacts that can be garnered therefrom. But also making sure that we are a welcoming and, and inclusive county. I read a really interesting article in the New York Times over the weekend about how once the Supreme Court made a decision on same-sex marriage, certain partisan political groups were looking for the next hotbed issue of how they can culturally divide Americans. And the, they target group studied and attacks on transgender individuals was the most divisive. And I think it's clear, you can see that that is a strategy that's been used across the country in, to me, a really disappointing way. And so I appreciate that, that our county and its residents are willing to stand up for all in our community. Making sure that we can bring together the talents from folks of diverse and different backgrounds is great economically for our community. Allowing folks to coalesce yet retain their individual identity is imperative for our workforce. It leads to innovation and creativity, gives our county and our services a wider reach to more residents. And I, I think it's clear that we all have more learning to do. And it can't just be the same people talking. And so I'm excited that I will be asking staff to bring forward a study session in the future and a committee of the whole to discuss resolutions that would establish not only a sustainability, but a diversity advisory board for Johnson County so that we can bring together these voices and allow ourselves the opportunity of unlocking that talent that comes from the various lived experience of Johnson County residents. So looking forward to that. We'll also have an executive session in this room, but we are going to recess our meeting right now. We're going to take a gender review before executive session. So this meeting is recessed at 11:55. And I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and set us up for a gender review.